Have any citizens here that are wishing to speak before their citizens comments? There should be a sign in sheet on the podium. Please make sure you sign in. Thank you. Okay, it's 6:30. I will call the July meeting of the Tipp City Board of Education to order. If I could have anyone rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Dave Lee, please call roll. Mr. Spano, present. Mr. Venters, present. Mrs. Dahl.
Here.
Mrs. Dunaway.
Here.
Mrs. Heatherly.
Present.
All present accounted for, sir. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is committee reports. Tippy Canoe Athletic Boosters. Corinne, I think, does the report?
Yes. I'm just gonna read a really quick announcement. A quick update from the Tippy Canoe Athletic Boosters. The annual Athletic Booster Fun Drive will be Monday, August 13th, from 5:30 to 7:30. Our student athletes will be asking for the community's continued support for the upcoming school year. Thanks to our community's generosity, the Tippy Canoe Athletic Boosters provided $34,000 to our high school and middle school athletic programs last year. Over 500 student athletes greatly benefited from this wonderful support. Needed equipment and uniforms were purchased with this money and two scholarships were awarded. In an effort to reduce the number of fundraisers this year, individual team fundraising will be much different. Teams will not be doing their usual coupon book and cookie dough sales. Instead, the teams will rely more heavily on the support from the Tippy Canoe Athletic Boosters organization. Please keep in mind that this parent group is trying to streamline donation requests this year and these hardworking volunteers greatly appreciate your support of our student athletes. Thank you and we will see you on August 13th.
Thank you. Athletic Boosters does a great job for us, so go out there and support them, please. All right, moving on, the legislative update.
Yeah, there is some legislation moving through the legislature that I think is worth mentioning at this meeting. There's a House Bill, House Bill 343, it's called. It has to do with the way that schools can challenge property valuations by the county auditor. And so, it's not something that really affects day-to-day operations, but it is something that, you know, we should probably be aware of and it may change our agendas going forward every now and then, agenda items. The main point of it, or the main sort of controversial point of it, I guess, to the extent it's controversial, is that currently if a school district wants to challenge an auditor evaluation, you know, take that to the Board of Revision and try to get that moved up, usually this happens if there's been a recent sale of the property and it, you know, looks like the auditor's too low. A school district or some other taxing authority can, you know, ask that the Board of Revision review that and they can move the valuation up. Right now, that's just kind of a decision by the administration and the treasurer can make that decision to make the challenge. This legislation would actually make that a board decision, so that would be something that would become, you know, more of a political decision. We would have to vote on it to be an agenda item for us to consider. And that's, you know, not necessarily setting a policy, but on a very specific property-by-properity basis. And so, the state, the OSBA opposes that. There's a lot of support for it, too. It passed the House pretty easily and it's now in the Senate, so just something that's coming down the road. I don't know that it, you know, changes things so much that we'd want to, you know, spend any political capital on that, but something to be aware of. I mean, personally, I'm not a big fan of making those kinds of things political decisions, but, you know, I'd just as soon leave it up to the administration, but that's that. And so, that may be coming down the road. I'll let you know, you know, if and when it passes.
We have done some challenges of.
We have.
That's correct.
That is correct.
Yeah, we have. I mean, it is something that could certainly come up, so.
So, I think it's done by the Board of, says the administration.
Right, correct. That's all I have.
Anything else? Okay. Thank you. All right, moving on to the superintendent and assistant superintendent report. Dr. Dahl?
All right, Chris, I wanted to make sure to welcome our friends from Plowood Schools today. Thank you for being here. We have Treasurer Janice Allen, as well as Board President Denise Moore, and Administrative Assistant Kim Tid. Yeah, so we're glad to have them here. They're learning about Board Docs, which we have just recently adopted and began using. We're kind of newcomers to it ourselves, but we're finding it to be very beneficial and so they're learning about it as well to see if that might be a fit for their district. So, glad to have them here this evening. We want to start off with personnel. We have several people here this evening, very excited about that, and so I'm gonna turn that over to Mr. Gingrich.
Thank you. And we'd like to welcome those that are here and we'll start, we'll start in the back with our new assistant principal of the high school. Chris, so we'll let you introduce yourself and those you brought with you.
All right. My name is Chris Nick and I'm honored to be your next assistant principal at the high school. I come to you with 19 years of teaching experience in the classroom and now I'm losing my train of thought here. And I look forward to, you know, working with everybody here. And throughout my career, I've worked to grow professionally at both a teacher and a coach and I hope to continue doing that as I work with Mr. Veerhoff, with the administrative team, our parents, and most importantly, our teachers, and most importantly, our students. And I will do my part. I'm committed to uphold Tipp City Schools' tradition of excellence. Along with me, I've brought some of my family. My wife Jessie is also in education. She's the coordinator for gifted services and also the district, oh gosh.
912 curriculum specialist.
I always want to say director. I try to, she's such a big deal and I always try to give her more credit. And then I also have my youngest son with me here, Kayden, and my oldest son, he had soccer camp that began tonight at UD, so we had to make that decision and we opted to send him because he had made a commitment with his team to go there, but he wanted to be here as well for this and so, thank you very much. I really appreciate it and go Red Devils.
And we will refrain from all hair jokes for our. We'll just let that be. So, and then we have some others. We'll start over here with Brooke. She's gonna be our, one of our clinic aides.
Hello, I'm Brooke Terrell. This is my fiancee Cameron Womboldt. I am a Tipp City School graduate, as well as the Miami Valley CTC where I received my LPN license, so I'm very grateful to serve as the Nevencopic School Clinic Aid, as well at LT Ball as needed. And I just want to thank you for giving me this opportunity and I'm excited to see where this school year starts.
Thanks, Brooke. And then we'll start down here. We have, Brandy's gonna be a long-term sub in our, one of our special needs students, so, Brandy.
Hi, my name's Brandy Larisse. I'm currently pursuing my master's to be an intervention specialist, which I will graduate in December. Thank goodness. Previously, I worked at Hoover City Schools, specifically Wayne, and I absolutely loved it. I worked in an image unit and it was amazing. And so, I'm super excited for this opportunity and to work at such a great school district and thank you.
And the next several are gonna be special ed aides for us, and so we'll start next with Dawn.
Okay. I'm Dawn Teal and I have three boys currently in Tipp Schools and I spent the past couple years at St. John's Preschool and last year was my first year subbing with Tipp, middle school mostly, some LT Ball and the office at Broadway, and I absolutely love it and I love kids. They're probably like my most favorite thing because they're just fun and positive, so I'm super excited. Thank you.
And Emily Highcamp, it's good to see you, Abby and Aiden, one of my Broadway kids.
Hello, Emily Highcamp and I'll be starting at LT Ball this year. I have a background in both early childhood education and higher education. I'm really looking forward to serving the K-12 population here at Tipp Schools. I'm a Tipp grad, my husband Mark is a Tipp grad. Abby and Aiden will be at the middle school and little Claire over here will be starting kindergarten, so I hope it's a really good year for all of us. Thank you.
And Michael, you're next, please.
Hello, my name's Bakudere. I recently kind of graduated from high school at Greening in 2014. I attend Rice State University where I have an education kind of background with that and I will be at the high school this year. I've also had the privilege to have been with the Tipp football team the last four years and now I get to help in another way that is meaningful to me. I volunteered a lot of my time with intervention specialists when I was in Greening for three years, considering that was kind of my background, I had hearing impairment and I was able to help people out that was in need and do it for free, so now I'm really glad I get to work with the high school kids and help them out.
And we all feel that we're on vaca-, I think most of them are on vacation.
But welcome, we're glad to have you here in Tipp City.
So, we will be having a resolution later to, with our Board where they'll be voting on that, but I wanted to say thank you so much for taking time, for being here this evening. We're excited to see you out here in buildings as the school year starts and I always say that would be a great time. If you would like to dismiss, you definitely can do that and go do something fun and have some ice cream to celebrate, so we'll see you soon. You're welcome. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Bye.
We'll give a JD.
All right, good man, thank you very much.
Whoa, wow, hey, look at us kids. It's just us kids. The summer meetings are great.
All right, well, we're ready for Miami Valley and Green Technology Center, our board's position and just want to talk just a little bit about that. Applications are due on the 27th, that's our deadline for that. The actual position will run through December 31st, 2019, and we are going to hopefully talk here a little bit about possibly a special meeting if we want to do that under the president's report. If you want to talk about that now, either way's fine, so that we can actually have an opportunity to interview those that have applied and those that will be applying the next day or so.
So, I think, as we're aware, the next meeting, August 14th, and Frank probably will not attend that meeting, would like to have our new representative at that meeting to take on that responsibility. So, we do have at least two candidates that have submitted resumes we'd like to be considered. So, my suggestion is that we have interviews maybe the first week of August, the first, actually probably the second full week of August, 6th through the 9th sometime during that week, to do interviews and then select based on those interviews and get them in place, so.
We don't need all five of us, correct? Because I'm gonna go to the good trip.
Like that majority at least, maybe.
I mean, is anybody else going on vacation besides me? Okay, good, we're good, go for it.
Do we have to interview everybody that applies or do we?
We can, we don't have to interview everyone that applies, we can.
I just don't know how it works though.
Last time we had two.
We had two, we had.
Yeah, when we got two, we're probably gonna interview everybody that applies.
Do we get the same lady that applied last December?
We did.
Oh, she's perfect. There you go, there's my girl. No, she's fantastic.
Um, so, you know, applications are due by Friday and then we would, I can take a look at them, I mean, we'll wind up with two or three, I'd say we would interview everybody. If we wind up with five or six, we can maybe pare it down. So, we'll, we'll take a look at that, but I mean, I guess what I'd like you to do is take a look at your calendars and see what day that week would.
Can we just do that now?
Would work. Sure.
I'd just like to mention on the Monday, the 6th, that is the Fall Athletic Parent Meeting, so that may not conflict with this group, that is at 6:30, but that just happens to be the Monday, that, so look at the other two evenings. Right now, I do not see anything on the school calendar on the Tuesday or the Wednesday.
My best days are the 6th or the 8th. I can't do the 7th.
8th works good for me, but the 7th, I have, we actually have a Hall of Fame meeting for the high school on the 7th, so at 6 o'clock, so.
Is the 8th? Okay, this is a stretch, but we have meet the teams on Friday, the 10th. We do it at 5 o'clock on Friday and go meet the teams?
I can't do Friday at all, if I'm gonna be in town. I'm doing a last minute trip, but that would be out for sure.
That too much?
Yeah, it'll be the 10th.
Okay, all right, I guess it's the 8th.
All right.
And, sorry, did we say what time?
We haven't yet.
Okay.
So, what time is it for everyone? Is 6:00 PM we want to do, 6:30? What, I mean, some of it might be dependent on the candidates as well, so, but, I mean, we can shoot for a time.
Is this something to shoot for, yeah?
Yeah, 6, 6:30, whatever, that's, that's right.
Okay, so let's look at 6 or 6:30, whatever works out, that's for.
Well, if they work until 5:30 and they're driving from the other, I remember the one lady lived in Dayton, so I would say 6:30, because if they're getting off work and driving, right?
Right. Well, I mean, if one of them can make it at 6, so we can actually start at 6.
6, right.
So, let's just.
Do you know if they're both in Dayton?
I don't, I have not seen their resumes.
I believe one is, one locally that does.
Oh, okay, so that might work better, 6. Okay, we'll just shoot for 6 o'clock.
Just let you schedule that.
Okay, I'll work with Mrs. Robins with that.
So, that'll be a special meeting on the 6th to handle that.
On the 8th.
Right, 8th, at 6.
Got it.
All right.
Okay, very good. All right, next we're going to just have some highlights for our summer programs.
And we're always pretty busy here in the summer, so just, we'll kind of start from what started first and that was, we had Safety City in June, June 11th through the 15th, and we had 85 kindergarten students attend that. And then we also had Summer Academy and we had 93 attend that in grades K through 6. And then we had Stagehand Crafters, which was taking place, and that was an exciting time and we had approximately 100 campers, right, 100 campers and lots of help and they were having a great time. We also had high school kids, most of this was credit recovery, but just working through some summer, getting credits and studying for some tests, getting intervention, and we had 70 kids, 50 kids, and they earned 70 and a half credits during the summer, during those, that short period of time, so some of them are working really hard. And just finishing up, which will be concluding on Thursday, is Extended School Year and we have 11 students doing its Extended School Year currently, and they, like I said, they'll be finished on Friday and that will be pretty much the end of our summer's program, but then all the summer things for sports begin right after that, so.
I have a question. I was wondering, is there some way to maybe estimate the number of hours that the school district is providing instruction over the summer and maybe.
I can be a calculator, but I can come up with that maybe a little bit.
I don't expect it tonight. And maybe some estimate of approximately how much it costs.
Sure.
It'd be interesting, because I think some people think, you know, teachers don't do anything all summer.
Yeah.
And a lot of them are doing a lot of hard work in helping students year-round, so.
Sure, I'll get some help from Mr. Stevens on the cost and I'll come up with the hours and.
Whatever is reasonable.
Sure.
But I think it'd be interesting to help our community understand the cost of education. Goes on year-round.
It does.
It does. And we try to make programs fun in the summer, but we, we're fortunate, we do have great participation. All right, thank you, Mr. Gingrich. And now we're going to look a little bit at open house schedule. The July is quickly flying by and here we are, finding ourselves just about in August, so August will be starting fast forward and as we do that, we will have open houses, our kindergarten will have the parent orientation, which is parents only, and that will be on August the 16th. Information is being sent out to our new parents. On August the 20th is the open house for Broadway Elementary, that begins at 5 o'clock and that runs till 7:00 PM. Nevencopic, they begin theirs at 4 o'clock and that runs till 6:00 PM. LT Ball on the same evening, August 20th, that runs from 5:30 to 7:30. And then the high school, our Tippy Canoe High School, there is more what we call a back-to-school night, and so that actually is a rotation and abbreviated bell schedule. Very exciting. We began that last year and is very successful, well-received. Parents will arrive at 6 o'clock for that and they will all join together there in the CPA for kind of an opening piece and then some guidance about how the evening will unfold and then our parents will begin rotating with a bell system, so hope you can come out for that. Our middle school will have their open house then on the following.
Not an open house.
Excuse me, a back-to-school night. Thank you, Mrs. Robbins. A back-to-school night, which is a similar configuration to that of our high school, which is an abbreviated bell schedule. They will join in the gymnasium at 6 o'clock and that will be on the 21st, so we hope to see all of you out. It's exciting evening and our students enjoy coming out as much. It's time to meet teachers informally, but also that of our middle school and high school to actually hear a little bit about the courses that the students will be taking. Any questions on that?
I have a quick question. You know how we're gonna do the freshman come one day?
Yep.
And, what is it?
First day school.
Right, but what did you call it? You had a word, I mean, what did you call that idea?
Link proof?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, like, and you know how the kids that aren't freshmen, you know, they're gonna have other opportunities that they're gonna fulfill that day? I had a couple of questions that have been asked of me, like, kids that are doing college credit plus programs full-time, they don't follow the high school schedule, right? So, this wouldn't even affect them?
No.
Like, they don't have to, okay.
We have some kids who.
That's what I thought, but I told them I would ask just to make sure that, because they're already, because isn't the expectation is that they follow whatever school that's their.
We have a handful of students who really don't step foot in our building.
Right.
Because they're doing all college credit plus.
And those kids wouldn't be expected to do a career experience, a college visit.
Exactly.
Okay, that's what I thought, I just wanted to make sure.
Yep.
Okay, which is a great segue into our next part, which is opening day for our staff is August the 20th. On that day, we will begin at 8:00 AM over at the high school, from 8:00 to 10:00 AM, we'll have our opening day and kind of a celebration and kickoff. It's a great time and one of my favorite days of the year, that and graduation, I think. And then on the 21st, we'll be having professional development and our speaker is Pat Quinn. He comes from Wisconsin. We've had several of our staff, particularly from the high school, that attended a session and really was very motivated and inspired by him and we've been able to secure him. He will be talking about improving class instruction, motivating students, personal life and learning and differentiation, so all terrific topics. We will have an AM station for our middle school and high school and then an afternoon station on that, on the 21st for K through 5, so I think we have something great for all staff on that particular day. And his live trainings are said to be sellouts, so we're excited to have him on board that day. That kind of wraps up our first couple of days of opening and then did want to just talk about opening days for our students as well. Regarding our students, we will have first through 10th grade will be reporting to the buildings on August the 22nd and then our, and that would be that transition, that special day that Mrs. Dahl and Mr. Veerhoff just spoke about for our 9th and 10th graders at the high school, but our regular K, excuse me, 1st through, 1st through 8th will have just the regular days as they begin school and our 11th and 12th graders will be either job shadowing or doing college visits that day. There's been a lot of communication going out to parents regarding this kind of special startup at our high school that's come out and they've been notified via letters, via quick news, emails, even a postcard that's gone out to them, and I'm informed that there will also be a reminder of a one call as we get much closer, so I know schedules get busy and we want to make sure everybody's informed on that. We welcome our kindergarten students on Friday then, August the 27th, so it's coming fast and furious, but there are always exciting days in our school. And then last, under our reports, happens to be the facilities. I know Mr. Fister sent something out to the Board even today. A lot of exciting things going on, both at LT Ball and at the middle school. The new chiller and boilers have been set in place at LT Ball and they begin to bring them online now. We actually had some great photographs of these massive pieces that are being put in place, the fire alarm, a new fire alarm. At LT Ball is complete and is really commissioned and inspected, so it is now actually online, so that's exciting. The work of the new fire alarm at the middle school is underway and so the current system will remain online until the new system is complete, so that we make sure we have full coverage there. Roof work, which is a big piece, that is over the lockers in the area of the middle school and also I think on the one particular section of LT Ball as well and making some great progress on that and as we dig in, we really find out that there are spots that it was, there was pretty significant needs, so this is going to be a great way of being proactive and taking care of our buildings and facilities to make sure that's in place. So, we keep working day after day and we're seeing progress. It is a process, so the in-between stage, when I think of the ductwork at the middle school, ultimately, they are creating areas that is all customized to make sure that that, you know, meets the needs of that building and it's pretty amazing to see it in process, so, exciting though. It's coming along and they, the crew is even working Saturdays and they projected a few Sundays that they will do because they, they're working very hard to keep the timeline, so appreciate that. Mr. Fister does a great job, but all the crew that's on staff is doing a great job for us. Any questions on that?
Just a comment, the photos on the website are great.
Yeah.
And really tell, they tell the story.
Right, and we continue to add to that each week, so if you have a chance to, walk onto our district website and right there on the front page, there's a part that talks about our facilities work is underway and Mr. Fister and along with our technology departments doing a great job of adding each week and we get just a small preview of how that's unfolding. That's all I have unless there's any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Dahl. All right, citizens comments, I'm judging from the room.
You're all citizens, right?
We will not have any citizens comments, fine. President's comments, I will defer in the interest of time here, we'll keep moving the meeting along. So, next item is approval of the primary meeting minutes. There was a set of minutes attached to your agenda for the July 23rd meeting.
June 23rd.
Or, June 23rd, June 25th, I'm sorry, and the July 10th. Looking at the date of the minute of the attachment, but yes, June 25th meeting and July 10th, special meeting. We have motion to approve.
I'll make the motion.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. Teresa and Corinne, do you have any discussion or corrections to make?
I made some corrections with Dave.
Yes.
Already?
We could have some corrections to the meeting on the 25th, under which section was that, Teresa?
Uh, it was that part, right, oh, shoot, I'm already on July 10th. The very beginning, Mr. Greenberg introduced Nancy Murray-Gomel, the first couple of sentences. There was nothing major.
Yeah.
And I called Dave about item O, the PI levy renewal, and suggested under discussion that we clarify that it's a two mil levy. We should specify that in the minutes.
I believe those are the only changes that were suggested.
Based on those corrections, are we ready to vote? Please call roll. Mrs. Dunaway?
Yes.
Mrs. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Heatherly?
Yes.
Mr. Spano? Yes. Mr. Venters?
Yes.
Minutes are approved with those corrections. Moving on to the treasurer's report. Moving on to the treasures report. Mr. Stevens?
Can I get a motion to approve the treasures report?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
So I have a motion and a second from Joellen. From Teresa, a second.
All right, do we have any questions about the content of the June, the final month of the year report? If not, I'll just, uh, go over a couple of highlights. Uh, we did end the year, um, better off than what we had originally budgeted. Do some additional, uh, cash receipts. The property taxes received from the county auditor came in higher than what they anticipated. And then as we, uh, discussed a little earlier, uh, we did have a board revision case that went through, um, with the property in Tip City that was undervalued. And the property owner did settle with the district and did make the district whole for tax years sixteen and seventeen. So that was a larger amount, just under two hundred thousand dollars for those two tax years. Uh, we will see another, um, payment of about eighty-three thousand dollars this fiscal year. And that takes care of the three fiscal year, or the three tax years left on the valuation. I believe the county auditors will reevaluate at the appropriate amount so that they, then, uh, the owner will be paying the appropriate amount. Um, so that is one of the good things about the board revision. Instead of having us have to go through and meet and discuss, that was able to work with the attorneys directly and just go forward with that. So, uh, another item of note, if you look at our interest revenue, I believe that is on page three. It, we are reporting seventy-five thousand dollars of interest revenue this month. Uh, it is a little unusual, but we do have a note in there. We had, in September of two thousand fourteen, we had invested money with Star Plus. It is a state-run investment, um, that we, that all schools are allowed to put money into. The former treasurer did not report any of the interest that was earned on a month-to-month basis. Uh, when you have investments, sometimes you don't do that mark-to-market. You keep it at the book value, which was two point five million for us. Uh, I contacted the auditor's office and said, this, this investment never loses any money. It's just like our other Star Ohio account, it just continues to grow and grow. And I said, what is it, do we need to wait until we sell that investment off or close that account to recognize the interest? And they said, no, you can go ahead and book that. So, I wanted to start booking it to show what we've really had in the account. So, I mean, for the past four years, we've been showing two point five and really it should be two point five, five, six. So we did recognize fifty-six thousand dollars of interest that's been earned. Uh, just to note, over the past three years, uh, I don't think it's on this page. But over the past three years, we've earned about twenty-five thousand dollars. And over the past year, we earned twenty-five thousand dollars. It just shows how interest rates have really gone up this past year. Um, but from now on, we will be providing, recording all of our, our cash investments at the value. And so that was one of the other items that helped our ending cash balance, uh, do better than what we had originally anticipated. And then also on the expense side, while our, if you look at the, uh, budget versus actual for the year, you can see that our personnel services, which is payroll, we ended at ninety-nine point seven percent of what we budgeted to spend. And, uh, our employee benefits was ninety-seven. So, out of that, was that eighteen and a half million dollars, we came under by under eighty thousand, at less than one percent. So, uh, but we were able to, we did save money in the purchase services, supplies and materials and capital. We did not spend as much as the board had authorized our school buildings and maintenance and transportation to spend. So, uh, that is a, that is a plus for us. And as you can see, it did help our bottom line, uh, so that we will be able to start with a good cash balance for this upcoming fiscal year. And hopefully that will be the trend that we have as we go through the next five years for our five-year forecast. Any other questions?
Yes, we're good.
Hey, I just, I just say you can spend it, that's all.
Or not spend it.
Or not spend it, that's right.
Don't forget that part of the equation.
All right. No other questions, we'll vote on the approval of the treasures report.
Okay.
Call roll.
Mrs. Heatherly?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway?
Yes.
Mrs. Doll?
Yes.
Mr. Spano?
Yes.
Mr. Venters?
Yes.
And motion is approved. Next is the fiscal year nineteen appropriations amendment. So I'll look for a motion.
I'll move to approve.
Second?
A motion and a second from Andy and Teresa.
Okay, I need to start off. I apologize, I did provide everyone with the printout. Um, now, while our appropriations did not change from this printout versus the, um, the attached document and board docs, the first column did change, that was the unencumbered balance. I did not have the right unencumbered balance in this spreadsheet. We did not change the appropriations. I just wanted to make sure you guys had the right spreadsheet. Um, it's kind of a little confusing and for me, and I always have, I have to remember this every year. Your unencumbered balance plus the amount of advances due from these funds. I forgot the advances. So, the way the county auditor looks at it, you have unencumbered balance plus the outstanding advance amount. So, I had to update that. But other than that, the appropriations that we're approving have not changed from those two spreadsheets. And as you can see, we had three changes. Uh, one was for the general fund and then the other was for the nineteen fund, which is our local grant. We did receive some additional grant funds already and we'll see those come in throughout the year. And then in the three hundred fund, we received our cheerleading budget, which we'll see changes throughout the year for the three hundred funds as well as other teams provide their budgets. So, did business as usual for appropriations.
Any questions or discussion? Dave, can you make sure though that the, uh, board docs agenda gets updated with the?
Yes.
New, uh, appropriations document?
Yes.
As a matter of our records. Ready to vote, I'll call roll.
Mr. Venters?
Yes.
Miss, Mrs. Dunaway?
Yes.
Mrs. Doll?
Yes.
Mrs. Heatherly?
Yes.
Mr. Spano?
Yes.
Mr. Venters?
Yes or yes?
I apologize. Who did I miss?
For the third time, yes. I love this, it's awesome.
Motion is approved with the mention of yes? Who did I miss? Did I miss someone?
No, you just got, I.
Okay.
There's no.
I'm a banker, that's my combo.
You can never have enough yeses.
All right.
Um, then the now fund, uh, need a motion?
I'll move.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second from, uh, Corinne and, and, uh, Joellen. Uh, any questions? Dave, you got anything special you wanna say about?
Oh, let me pull that up, just to make sure I can.
License renewals.
Ah. Yeah, I had the note in there, um. I don't really consider this an out, but I'm covering my butt with the auditors. Because it's, it's a renewal subscription and we renewed, it's for a renewal next month. It expires seven thirty-one eighteen, so we got our renewal in before seven thirty-one, before it even current subscription ends, so. But, yeah, invoice says, and they sent it to us in April saying, hey, by the way, don't forget to pay us. Since that, that's the date that's there, I'm gonna just cover my butt. I like, I like to do that.
Questions?
Nope.
Call roll please.
Mrs. Doll?
Yes.
Mrs. Heatherly?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway?
Yes.
Mr. Spanos?
Yes.
Mr. Venters?
Yes.
And motion is approved. Last item under the treasure report is, uh, transfers and advances. We have, uh, a transfer here listed for the nutrition services, need a motion?
I'll move, second?
A motion and a second from Corinne and Teresa. Dave, what would you like to tell us about this?
This is what we budgeted. Yeah, Mr. Fister, we included this in his budget and he hopes to do an advance of sixty-five thousand dollars. And depending on what the board decides to do later in the year, we can determine if we need to move, uh, our benefits around for insurance, whether the general fund pays that or we could keep it in the food service fund. Um, if we don't make any adjustments, the sixty-five thousand dollar advance will probably turn into a transfer at the end of the year. But for now, we're gonna try and we'll see what happens.
All right, please call roll.
Mrs. Doll?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway?
Yes.
Mrs. Heatherly?
Yes.
Mr. Spano?
Yes.
Mr. Venters?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Hey, um, excuse me, Mr. Stevens?
Yeah.
I usually don't look up there, but it said it was motioned and seconded, but does that matter?
I fixed it.
Oh, okay.
It should change in a sec.
I don't, yeah. I, I didn't know if that's.
There we go, Teresa Dunaway.
Oh, okay, I didn't know if that's just what it looks like.
Oh, believe me, when I went to call roll, it was, no, that's not right.
Since we are having a learning kind of classroom.
There's people looking over our shoulders.
That's right.
All right, I have no old business, anyone have that old business reported for?
No.
Seeing none, we'll move on to new business.
Item A, approval of contract and payment to Naviance by Hobson's. First year payment is sixteen thousand four hundred and twenty-six dollars and forty cents. Years two through five will be nine thousand six hundred and seventy-seven dollars and forty cents.
Need a motion?
I'll make.
You go ahead.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
I have a motion from Andy and a second from Joellen. Discussion or questions?
Uh, I'll kind of start off and then I'll ask Mr. Veerhoff to add to, but just wanna let you know that, uh, ultimately, you know, there's been some information that's come out about this. We're excited about the opportunity to bring this into our district and utilize it. Uh, we do have now Miami County Consortium that we're, uh, have kind of developed and brought together with interest of, uh, both Miami East, Trotwood, uh, Milton Union and Franklin Monroe. Uh, and areas, other areas, schools that are presently using are, uh, Pickwell, Oakwood, Centerville and Kettering. And, uh, on page thirteen of the proposal, uh, you'll see, um, some kind of highlighting areas of the savings with the consortium approach. And that is, uh, well over nine thousand dollars of savings. So, we're excited about that and excited that we have it, uh, as part of, uh, our instructional support, uh, and student support for this coming school year. Uh, there's, uh, several areas that, uh, are particularly going to be utilized. This is an area that's called self-discovery. Uh, another area that's called career exploration and that be connected to career readiness, academic planning and post-secondary, uh, preparation. Um, and Mr. Veerhoff, what would you like to add?
Uh, we, we see this as a useful resource, not just for our students, but also for our counselors and for parents. Um, it really brings the three groups together in a process to provide students with some guidance on career exploration, um, college selection. Uh, it streamlines the college application process. It provides us with a curriculum six through twelve, um, with career exploration. And that's something at the high school that we'll utilize in our advisory. Uh, I think the middle school will be utilizing that in the Red Devil period. But, uh, we see this as, again, a tremendous benefit to our parents, to our students and, and most importantly, to our staff. Uh, or I guess they're all pretty much equal importance there. But, uh, appreciate the board's commitment to the program and we see some benefit, uh, in alumni tracking and being able to document how many of our graduating seniors go on to a four-year college. But how often do they stay at that four-year college and complete the degree process? And then report back whether they're, not they've actually attained deployment. So, there is, uh, some tremendous benefit to us as a school district in helping students to plan for their future and, and life beyond Tip State schools.
How do you plan to market it to parents?
Once our counselors go through the onboarding process at, at the E S C. with, uh, the Naviance Professional Development, um, we'll look to find ways to get parents on board with this. Um, Naviance has specific, um, ways in which you, you bring your, your parents on board. Um, they have, uh, suggested activities that you do with parents and, and ways to get them started. Much similar to the process that we utilize with Power School. Um, so there'll be communications coming out from the high school about that.
They talked a lot about college transcript, college transcripts. Do we typically, how do we do them now?
So, now we print all the, the transcripts and then, or upload them electronically. This, this process, as I said, will, will streamline the college application process, particularly for those students who are applying through the Common App, um, which will make life easier for students and for our counselors.
I just picked up on that, I thought that was a thing that parents are really gonna like.
Yes.
And really appreciate.
Yes. Uh, one of the neat features that they shared with us at the, at the kind of sales pitch, for lack of a better term, um, was a way in which students can go through this process of really filtering colleges. So they can put in, you know, I wanna go to a college that's under twenty thousand dollars, I want this major, I want this size school. And it filters through all of the colleges and universities in the United States and, and pinpoints selections based on their criteria.
That's fantastic. I didn't read that in the document at all.
I saw that it offers test prep?
Hmm-hmm.
So is that something that students, like, they would access us from home to do test prep?
They could.
Okay.
We are going to, uh, utilize the A C T. test prep. And that's something that we'll use in our college and career readiness class, um, that Mr. Albers will be teaching. Uh, he's actually co-teaching that with Mrs. Coball. Uh, so they'll utilize some of those resources in that class. We'll utilize some of it in our advisory, especially with our juniors, when they prepare for the, the state mandated A C T. Um, in the future, there is also A, A P. test prep. Now, we thought about going so far with that and, and, and taking that on this year. But then, as we thought through this some more, wanted to scale back and really focus in on a few things, rather than doing a whole lot of things. And, and really start to get our, our heads wrapped around the, the few things that we are going to do. And then we can add those layers on in future years.
We were doing some test prep for A C Ts before, but using a different methodology, a different program, right?
We were, and we actually, um, were working with College Sense and brought them in for a one-day seminar.
Right.
We've also offered some workshops throughout the summer, um, through Sugar Creek Educational Services. Um, those are pretty expensive. The Sugar Creek one alone, I think is close to five hundred dollars. The, uh, one-day seminar with College Sense was somewhere around sixty dollars. Um, these are things that with, you know, the financial stewardship of the board, we've been able to do and provide for students through Naviance now. Uh, we still may try to utilize some of those other services.
Yeah, that's where I was going.
But, we see this as a way to, to kind of test the waters with it and see, is this something we can just adopt and, and do away with those other things?
And as far as tracking usage, I mean, that was one of the things that I was interested in is.
Sure.
Are we really using this like we initially, or, or as it was sold to us? I mean, is it, how are, is there ability to track the usage and how are, will you report to the board on, on how that usage is going?
I would be glad to report back to the board mid-year and at the end of the year of how, how we've utilized this. Uh, I would imagine, just like many of the other things that we utilize, we can, as admins, can go in and, and kind of track how long. Like with our A P. teachers, I can go in and see how many of them actually access the reports from College Board. And see who is logged in, when they logged in, and how much time they spent. Um, so we do have a little bit of oversight with that.
And then, did they explain how, um, they track them post-high school? Did the students have to log back in and report to the system?
There'll be some of that self-reporting, but there is, be, because they're in the system and then they go on and they, they pretty much declare what school they're going to. Naviance and Hobson's is able to then track them beyond our, our tracking ability.
Right.
Um, you know, we've done a nice thing with College Connection and, and trying to reconnect with alumni on different college campuses. Uh, last year we went to B G., the year before that we went to Wright State. This year we're gonna, we're gonna go to U C. Um, and we get to talk to our students who are on those campuses. This is gonna allow us to track them at any campus that they go to.
Any other questions?
I was just saying that, oh, excuse me.
Lisa Coball and Nick.
Lisa Coball and Nick Albers and I went to a career readiness conference today and heard a lot about Naviance there. And found some districts that have used it for a number of years. And so that will be nice. We picked up some people that we can network with, I think, to help us maybe pace up a little faster than we would if we worked on our own. So seems to be, from what I've heard, a great tool for those that we heard were using it.
And I was just gonna add that I think we're very excited about the potential power of the program. As we learn and, and are utilizing it, that there's new things for us to be able to bring on board and, and use. So it should be great.
Well, thank you. Appreciate the time and being here for us to ask questions of you.
Sure.
Uh, please call roll.
Mr. Venters.
Yes.
Mrs. Heatherly.
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway.
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway.
Yes.
Mr. Spano.
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Close a hole too, where we hear a lot of feedback from parents that they want more stuff like this.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it has everything down to resume building, I mean, so it's, it's pretty diverse, actually. All right, uh, thank you for that. And, uh, item B, approval to employ the following resignations as.
One less in the audience here.
Down to two.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
So we have a motion and a second from Jo Ellen and Andy. Resignations, any questions?
Uh, no.
Call roll, please.
Mrs. Heatherly.
Yes.
Mr. Venters.
Yes.
Mrs. Dahl.
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway.
Yes.
Mr. Spano.
Yes.
That motion is approved.
Item C, approval to employ the following as a certified teacher on a linkeded contract for the 2018-19 school year pending proper certification and paperwork. That's Brian Wallingford, and to renew the tutor contract for Beth Dolliver for the 2017-19 school year. Should be 18-19.
It should be 18-19, correct?
That's right. We need to correct that.
It has been corrected.
Thank you.
Need a motion?
I'll motion.
Second.
Motion is second.
Okay, um, Brian looks awesome.
Oh, my gosh, so excited.
How did you find him?
What, very excited. I'm, I'm anxious for you to meet him. He's actually directing a summer production, and so that's why he's not here this evening. But I've asked for him to join us at our next meeting, just so that you have the, the opportunity to put a face in me.
His resume is, is wow. It's a wow. It's, it's something else.
Yeah, I think for the parents that were really concerned about our theater program, this is gonna get them.
They're gonna be so happy.
Excited, yeah.
Yeah. Wow, we got lucky.
Any questions, comments? Please call roll.
Mrs. Dahl.
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway.
Yes.
Mrs. Heatherly.
Yes.
Mr. Spano.
Yes.
Mr. Venters.
Yes.
That motion is approved.
Item D, approval to employ the following administrative position for the 2018-19 school year pending proper certification and paperwork.
And that's Christopher Zankis.
As per the agenda, yes.
Assistant principal at Columbia High School.
I'll move.
I'll second.
That motion is second from Corinne and Teresa. Any discussion or questions? Is she with us tonight?
I'll just say that working with Mr. Veerhoff and the, the interviewing team, both administrators, our, our staff, as well as parents, I feel that it was a very thorough job, as well as following up with records.
Please call roll.
Mrs. Dahl.
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway.
Yes.
Mrs. Heatherly.
Yes.
Mr. Spano.
Yes.
Mr. Venters.
Yes.
That motion is approved.
Item E, approval of the following change in position. Kristen Marsh from Broadway second grade teacher to Broadway third grade teacher.
Need a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second. We have a motion and a second. Jo Ellen, myself. Any questions or comments?
I'll just kind of give a little bit about the student-teacher ratio. Uh, second grade is at 175 students and has a two, student-teacher ratio of 21.8, so basically 22 students per teacher. Our third grade with this change at 205 students will have a ratio of 22.7 teacher-student ratio. So that's approximately between 22 and 23 for grade level, which once again is, is a good number for our district.
What was that ratio, 22.1?
Seven.
We got that bubble class coming through that we're just gonna.
That's what I was wondering about, the bubble class. Is that why Mrs. Shower went over there last year?
No.
Was it because of the bubble class? No?
Okay. Teacher got promoted for third grade.
All right, any other questions? Call roll, please.
Mrs. Heatherly.
Yes.
Mr. Spano.
Yes.
Mrs. Dahl.
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway.
Uh, yes.
Mr. Venters.
Yes.
That motion is approved.
All right, item F, approval to employ the following as classified staff for the 2018-19 school year pending proper certification and paperwork. That's Michael Derry, Emily Hydecamp, Amy Krebs, Melissa Lang, Dawn Teal, and Brooke Terrell. And additional information as per the agenda.
Quick motion.
I'll second.
A motion and a second from Andy and Jo Ellen. Any questions or comments?
Yeah, I'm just questioning why we need another clinic aid.
Yeah, resignation.
So.
Resignation.
Last month.
Last month.
So Brooke is replacing the full-time person we already had employed and then adopted?
Changing positions a little bit.
Okay. Sure. Go ahead, sorry. Sorry to see them.
We have one at LT Ball, but we have more significant health needs at Broadway next year. So one at LT is going to Broadway. She's replacing the full-time one that was at LT Ball.
Okay. So we're not adding any payroll? We're not adding any nursing hours with this?
No. So we're going from three and a half to four, unless somebody's still part-time. Well, the other per, the other person would have been doing some aid positions as WEP. She was part-time clinic and part-time other aid parts.
Okay.
So really, the position is a little bit different, but not anymore personnel.
Okay.
So we don't need the aid as additional help or?
We have a building right now that isn't covered, because we lost at Broadway. At Broadway, we had somebody there that was always a sub. They had a rotation of subs that covered there every day.
Is that Oskud or was that last year?
She was at LT.
Okay, gotcha.
Broadway had a person there every day, but they rotated. They have chosen not to do that anymore.
Okay.
That person has had a change in not wanting to take on the role of that sub. And so, so we lost that completely.
Okay.
So last year, we had every building covered. But this year, currently, we have LT Ball that will not have somebody there. Without aging subs, without aging subs.
Okay, so, because she's going to Broadway, you said? The LT Ball person's going to Broadway.
Well, the LT Ball person resigned. The person that was at LT Ball resigned.
Okay, gotcha.
Broadway was covered by full-time, like, aides that came in every day.
Okay.
So Brooke's gonna cover two schools.
Right.
So.
We're gonna.
Try it.
Right, have her do some coding.
Attempt that, but.
To LT Ball. LT Ball will need definitely to be checked on. Right now, LT Ball does not have students with diabetic needs.
Right, it's obviously, yeah, that's.
Very unusual, because it seems every building has that now.
Right.
We may have the next student that enrolls that may have diabetic needs, so we'll have to watch. And as I, I spoke and did the, the final interview process with Rick Brooke, I, I talked with her about that we need to have the availability, and that is a close proximity to be able to check in at LT Ball. And, and as she mentioned, travel is needed, because they, they need the support as well.
Right.
But it will look different, because once again, right now, they do not have the diabetic needs. Those, depending on age level, but I think in every case, we are very careful about the level of support for that.
Right.
And particularly over lunch, over lunch.
It's the lunch period that really is tough, when you don't have somebody there.
Would it make sense for Mrs. Taylor to cover LT Ball? Is that possible?
There are many diabetics at, at the middle school right now.
Okay.
And significant needs, so.
Right, so that doesn't work.
It doesn't really work, especially if they're got checked.
Because it's close. I was just thinking because proximity-wise, it's close.
If it's something serious, yes, she probably can get over there, but she's got many checks at that lunchtime.
Gotcha.
Um, that's the difficulty. That's when our diabetics need to be checked.
Right.
And that's when her kids tend to get injured as well, so.
Any other questions?
No.
Call roll, please.
Uh, Mr. Venters.
Yes.
Mrs. Heatherly.
Yes.
Mrs. Dahl.
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway.
Yes.
Mr. Spano.
Yes.
That motion is approved.
I almost said Mr. Venters again. Andy, you can't be a first person.
I know.
All right, item G, approval of the following substitute positions for the 2018-19 school year pending proper certification and paperwork as per the agenda.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
That motion is second from Jo Ellen and Corinne. Any questions or comments?
Yeah, what, I'm sorry, what buildings are these? We might have already said this when they introduce themselves.
Sure. Uh, Brandy will be at the high school.
Okay.
Uh, and Jody will be a traveling person, so she will serve both the middle school and the high school. She will be replacing Mrs. Tennis's position.
Okay. Oh, okay, great.
Any other questions? Call roll, please.
Mrs. Heatherly.
Yes.
Mrs. Dahl.
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway.
Yes.
Mr. Spano.
Yes.
Mr. Venters.
Yes.
That motion is approved.
Item H, approval to employ the following supplemental positions for the 2018-19 school year pending proper certification and paperwork as per the agenda.
Motion?
I'll second. Oh, are you motioning?
That's fine, I'll motion. So I have a motion and a second, myself and Corinne. Any discussion? Call roll, please.
Mr. Spano.
Yes.
Mrs. Dahl.
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway.
Yes.
Mrs. Heatherly.
Yes.
Mr. Venters.
Yes.
That motion is approved.
Item I, approval to employ the following for athletic service in the 2018-19 school year as per the agenda.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Sorry.
Um, we got a motion and a second?
Yep.
Who made the motion?
Andy and Teresa.
Andy. Andy and Teresa. Any discussion or questions?
I'll just say this is a strong beginning list. Sometimes, as we move through the different athletic sports and seasons, we'll see a few more that will be added, but it will build off of this primary list.
I did notice that JD's on this list.
I think that would be for maybe tournaments, in case they needed tournament support. I, I can ask him for clarification on that.
That would be correct.
Is that correct?
Tournament support, yes.
Okay.
Because that's through OHSAA.
All right, all right, I was just, just didn't register for me for a moment.
He's gonna be the, the security in the back hall.
He can do it.
Yeah, he can do it.
Pintall helps.
All right. Any, any other questions? So this list we'll continue to add to as, as needed for athletic competitions throughout the year. All right, call roll, please.
Mr. Venters.
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway.
Yes.
Mrs. Dahl.
Yes.
Mrs. Heatherly.
Yes.
Mr. Spano.
Yeah.
That motion is approved.
Item J, approval of resolution adopting calamity day alternative makeup plan for the 2018-19 school year as per the agenda.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
That motion is second, myself and Jo Ellen. Any questions or comments?
I just see this as a safety net. This year, we did need to use it. We had unusual weather conditions, and, and so I think it is helpful to have that in place. And we try, we, as we do this, we learn more about it. We don't have to utilize Blizzard Day very often, but we do learn to try to make it as meaningful as possible and have those assignments updated before the actual day occurs.
Can I ask you a really quick question, if that would be okay? Because I heard a lot of feedback about parents, especially in the lower elementary grades, complaining about the time to do the E assignments. Do you hear any of that, or is that just maybe people complaining to me?
That would be middle school, and the problem was the art project. It was very time-consuming, and the kids were spending.
Because I was just reading our policy. It says a learning opportunity. And I just think some of the stuff that I heard were, were parents, you know, they, they have to be at work.
Yeah.
And then they come home and then they have to do these big.
For our art project.
Yeah, like, I, I don't know. Do we give teachers guidance on what they are expected to?
We absolutely do, and that's part of that learning process, because I think they need to know and understand that it's just equivalent to one period, one class period.
Right.
And so I think that more and more, they're beginning to understand that. We do give, I believe it's a two-week period before that they are actually due. So in case, I've said, you know, that parents are busy on that given day and at work, then students may be able to get parts of it done, but they may need support from family. And so they do have a two-week window.
So like in your building, do they get a single learning opportunity? Or is it a learning opportunity per core subject area? Like, how, how do you guys determine?
Correct. They do, for example, they may have a math activity that they have to do. They will have a language arts, whatever special they were supposed to be at that day. They get on and find what, whatever that might be. So they were supposed to be in art that day. They may have something for art at Broadway. If they were PE, they may have a PE activity.
Okay.
And most of the staff, it is online, but most of them did provide, because parents, yes, the, the hard copy as well.
I thought it was nice, because it was a snow day, and one teacher said, if you go out and shovel a driveway or shovel somebody sidewalk, shoveling snow is a workout. And so I thought that was nice, that that counted as one, as an activity. Activity, yeah, it was fantastic.
Get them outside instead of in front of them.
Yeah, and regarding the art, I'm not picking on art, but, you know, if you're at home and you're not a crafty family, you don't have those supplies readily available, and the kids are at home and they're, like, to your point, the parents are at work, and they're getting all these text messages, "I need a hot gun," and, you know. And the parents are, whoa, whoa, timeout, what's going on? So I think it's, you know, to think about, is everybody gonna have these supplies on hand?
Right. Teresa, don't attack the arts.
No. I love the Schuster Center. I'm not, I'm just saying. Buy a blue gun on your lunch hour, is one of the parents', you know, favorite thing to do.
We continue to learn, and I think that's, and I think that for our physical education, I think that they have become creative about shoveling those things.
Shoveling a sidewalk, I thought was excellent.
Right, and trying to make it meaningful.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, yeah. So we'll, I, I hear that. I did make a notation, so we'll kind of talk with our ministry team.
Okay.
No, buy a blue gun on my lunch.
All right, ready to vote? Call roll, please.
Mr. Spano.
Yes.
Mrs. Heatherly.
Yes.